Evening, everyone. We will call to order, I will call to order, Chisholm City Council Meeting, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Susan, would you please take your call?
Congressman Holliva.
Present.
Congressman Barton.
Here.
Congressman Vaki. Abson. Congressman Garde.
Here.
Congressman Halverson.
Present.
Mayor Lamb.
Here.
The council look for a motion to adopt the agenda. We do have some, um, one addition, uh, four or five additions. One is the updated RFP addendum in regards to C two, Long Year Lake Pump Skate Park RFP. Um, two, that will be under, that's just C two under Bridgette. Uh, under Katie will add letter of support to United Way of Northeast Minnesota. And, um, number four, under myself, will be Resolution zero-four-two-five-dash-three-five. Proclamation recognized in twenty twenty-five, as April, uh, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And then last, under me, will be tobacco license for express lane, C A P L retail at one hundred West Lake Street. And under, um, F three, the working session, add campground and redhead. So with those additions, I would look for a motion of support to adopt the agenda.
Take motion.
Thank you, Jed. Support. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Plagued allegiance, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the motherland of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we stand as one.
Any public participation there?
Uh, none, Mayor.
Mr. Council, uh, reports. Commissioner Holliva, good evening.
Good evening. I attended the Central Iron Range Sanitary Sewer District Meeting and the Public Utilities Commission meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Barton, good evening.
Good evening. I have no phone.
Commissioner Varda, good evening.
I have no formal report.
Thank you. Commissioner Holliverson, good evening.
Oh, good evening. Um, I attended the Redhead Committee meeting last night. And I also will want to say thank you and best wishes to Bridgette. She's a unfortunate leaving Chisholm and went to a different project, but thanks for all your great work and wish you all the best.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I guess myself, um, yeah, obviously, uh, it's hard to move on, but, um, we will get there. Um, also, I just want to mention, I know my phone's been blown off the hook, um, reaching out to local, uh, elected officials with the news and the idling of Hibtec and Minorka. Um, obviously, we're all thinking about them, um, the miners, the mining industry, and everyone affected by it. I know, um, range of days down with capital is April seventh. If anyone would like to join myself and, uh, Rams going down on the bus. Um, definitely, I know a lot of our state and federal, uh, representatives are already working to see what they can do. You know, I had a number of reporters reach out to me and whatever anybody sees on the news is about as much information as I have also, so, you know, obviously, all we can do is, uh, you know, keep plugging along, so. Moving on, Amelius Director. Police Chief.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, it's an honor and privilege to be here in front of you folks, uh, this evening. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the, uh, Police Commission, um, Commissioner Vaki and Administrator Scraba, um, for giving me this opportunity. Um, I just want to guess continue on success, uh, successfully, uh, as the department has, uh, been before, so, uh, excited for this next chapter and, uh, although it's an interim position, uh, I don't take it lightly and, uh, uh, we'll push forward and, and be successful as a team, so. Uh, with that, I have nothing to report, so. Any questions for me? Very good. Thank you.
Who are the official? City Engineer?
I have no report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Public Works?
Larry, good evening.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I don't have anything in the agenda, so I'll give a small report. Um, we welcome Mr. Ryan Loubers to the City of Chisholm starting Monday, so, uh, we'll be fully staffed again in Public Works. It feels great to be fully staffed always, so. One person's super critical. So, we look for, uh, forward to having Ryan Loubers with us on Monday as a Chisholm resident and, uh, we're looking really forward to him as employee, so. Um, I ordered salt for two thousand twenty-six today. Yeah, two thousand twenty-six, I know. We have a lot of two thousand twenty-five to go. And, um, just some projects we're working on. Um, we're working on, we're, um, we're creating a new campground at the fairgrounds this year for fairgrounds and redhead peeps. So, uh, we're ordering material and coming up with the plant, final plans for that and working on our agreement with the fairgrounds. Um, um, we'll be bringing, uh, forward at the next meeting probably a proposal for an excavator for the Water and Sewer Department. Um, we were, we got, um, we got the go-ahead from the Public Utilities Commission this morning, so I'll meet with Stephanie and, and, uh, go over those details and have something for you at the next meeting. Um, lead line mandates by the Minnesota Department of Health that really spurred that, and then our mill and overlay project on Fourth Street. We believe that there's upwards of thirty-six lead lines that may have to be replaced before we can do the mill and overlay that the council approved at the last meeting, so. With that, amazing amount of work, we just gotta have the right tool for the job. So, we'll be bringing that forward. I just wanted to alert you of it. And then, um, and, uh, you may have seen some help around the city. Um, I reached out to, uh, probation, uh, our probation folks, supervisor folks, and they're starting to send a couple people our way, so we'll start to get the city cleaned up, you know, uh, this time of year with all the snow plowing and the garbage around the park, so it's super, super valuable. If you see them around, you can say thank you, and that's what they're doing, so. Just they're walking around city properties, city parks, campground, uh, all that, so, just so if you see them around. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Library Supervisor. Oh, jeez, I'm so sorry. How did I skip? City Parks Trails Ractor Hector. I usually... You saw, I'm salty. I am sorry, Bridgette. City Attorney?
No formal report from me either. Thank you.
City Clerk Treasure?
Let's be quick. I have nothing on the agenda, but just to give you an update of kind of what I've been working on, uh, the boards at the rink, uh, started coming out, the glass, um, we actually, timing's really good with this. We found somebody that'll take the glass from Cyclet. And it's about twenty miles away from where Larry's going to pick up, uh, his new grapple, so we'll be able to basically pay for the gas there and back and then maybe have a little bit extra over. So, that was, uh, uh, something that came, uh, up spur of the moment this week that got resolved. Um, final approval on the Public Works building. We were waiting on this final approval. We were trying to get, um, just a portion of it, just because the cash flow's been so slow. But, good news is, is that they're gonna approve the whole amount and hopefully we'll be getting that because we've been waiting on that for months.
Public Safety?
Or Public Safety, yeah. I don't know what that says. PFA, we're still waiting on that lead service line. We need to bring a temporary, um, bond resolution to the council, but we're waiting on lead service lines, or basically, as far as we can go on that project. Or, or that request for funding until we get more information from them. Um, journal entries for accounts payable have been done, so next I'm gonna be working on the reconciliations for all the projects for two thousand twenty-four, so that'll give us an idea of where a lot of these projects ended up. And I think that's all I have for an update, uh, unless anybody has any questions.
You done? City Administrator, Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, I do not have a report tonight.
The council moving on to the consent agenda, um, which consists of the list of bills, communications, minutes of previous council, city council meeting, payroll and overtime. I'll look for a motion and support to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mandy, good evening.
Um, first item on the agenda that I have is the second reading of the land use ordinance for fences.
Thank you, April. Is your support? Support. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda would be the grant agreement for the residential redevelopment program for the I triple R B. I'm just looking for approval on the application.
Okay, council, I'll look for a motion and support. Any discussion?
Your motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any questions?
Yeah, you have good questions.
Mm-hmm.
I was gonna reach out to you earlier, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to. Um, so I was just reading through the, the whole agreement and looks like the award was twenty-five thou- twenty-five thousand, right?
Correct.
And then, um, in our agreement, it says that there was five Sanos County tax forfeit properties.
Correct. Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
In this agreement, I only seen one address. So that's the first question.
Okay, Exhibit B should list five addresses unless the wrong exhibit got put in the agreement.
Exhibit B only has one, but the only reason I asked is because it is a multi-unit structure, so I didn't know if it completed all.
That may be the exhibit from the Buchanan Building.
Yeah.
It may have accidentally got, gotten put in the wrong, the wrong, um, flux system file.
Okay. And then, uh, so there's that.
Okay.
So then, uh, and then, so with that, I'll go back to the grant word of twenty-five thousand, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, on page... I got it all written down.
I can give you my copy of Exhibit B.
Oh, so, oh, they're all, all by property.
They're all there, yeah.
Okay. So we'll just have to make sure that's in the, in the packet.
Yes, in the, in the signed. Well, the, that doesn't go with the signed agreement. Um, it just goes with the, in our file, yeah, in the flux. So I'll email Denae tomorrow and make sure that, that the right exhibit goes into the right flux file.
And then I think just as a point of order, you'd want to make sure the exhibit is added to the path of your, for record.
Okay.
Yes. And then there was another piece in this proposal which, um, says that I triple R B will give thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars or thirty-five percent of the total demo. And, and that, and that, that, that number isn't correct? Oh, yeah, thank you. So on page twenty-five, up to thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty, but they're only approving us for twenty-five thousand? So are they approving us for thirty-eight thousand?
No, they're approving us for twenty-five. So, that, that was the wrong exhibit that was put in. That was for, uh, the Buchanan Building.
So wrong exhibit and wrong money, uh, by that whole.
Yes, the, the, there's, the agreement should state the correct amount.
So I guess on this one? You're right. So this one wouldn't eat, doesn't have any amount on it, maybe?
Yeah, it has, um, the amount listed for each property.
Oh, what, broken down?
Yes, broken down. It has for each property seventy-five percent up to each amount.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I guess that one's come.
And did you want to amend the motion to add Exhibit B?
You could go ahead and do it, just to make sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I remember I'm bushed to, uh, as you would do the D. I'll amend the second, but to be clear, it's twenty-five thousand, it's for five other properties and has nothing to do with the property.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
So what is, I guess the other question is, is Buchanan, there's some of them had all included in any?
No.
Of, of nothing, nothing?
Nothing in this grant agreement.
It's a different one.
It is a co- yes.
Okay.
And the files must be mixed up in the flux account, so when I went to print out, so I'll have to email Denae tomorrow on that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, do you want me to give this to Susan before?
Hey, Jim, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of councils. If you would please turn to page twenty-eight in your packet, please. We have Resolution oh-three-twenty-five-dash-thirty-three. And with that, we're giving you a summary of the three bids that we received a week ago on our Fifth Street South project between Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue Southwest. Um, and you see the three bidders and their prices. Uh, just for clarification as well, if you go back, uh, two more pages to pages thirty and thirty-one, you see the bid tabulation. So what I want to clarify is what, uh, ad alternative number one is, and it's, uh, the bottom three items on page thirty-one, which include the, uh, six-inch sanitary sewer services on private property. And then the, uh, lead service lines that we need to keep track of separately for our reimbursement from, uh, PFA. So, uh, we do need to award, uh, if you choose to move forward, uh, with both the base bid and the ad alternative. Uh, very good competitive bids. As you see, the top two bids are within seventy-two hundred and fifty dollars of each other. That's very competitive when you're talking about a one-two, one-point-two million dollar project. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you would have, but I would recommend approval of Resolution oh-three-twenty-five-dash-thirty-three, awarding the contract for the Fifth Street Southwest Infrastructure Replacement Project to TNT Construction Group of Grand Rapids. They are the contractor that, uh, is completing the adjacent project of this past year, and I think both Larry and I are very pleased with their workmanship, their quality of their work, their courteousness and, uh, work ethic. And, uh, so, uh, we're happy to, uh, recommend, uh, award to TNT Construction of Grand Rapids. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I do have something to add to that, if it's okay.
Yes, please.
Um, I just want the council to be aware, this is the project that we didn't get the PFA funding, um, based on the bonding bill not going through last year at the legislative session. Their funds for PFA were less than what's expected from the state. So what we're doing with this, this is the two blocks that's by the school that we're working in conjunction with the school for their project, so we don't go back and rip up those sidewalks. Um, however, the funding is, um, not secured at this time. What we're doing is we're working with I triple R to get additional funding for the project. We may be eligible for PFA, but it would be after the project is complete and it will back pay on this project. And Devin is working, um, but, last case scenario to do, working to get a bond for the project, to pay for the remaining. We will have assessments on it, and I'm hopeful that we'll have a I triple R grant, but the remaining of the funding is, um, not secured. So I just want you to be aware that that's where we're at with this before you approve it. Um, we do recommend approval of it, um, with all of that being said, but PFA is not secured. We will not know until October. We do not know for sure on our I triple R grant. Worst case scenario, we will go out for a bond. I just wanted you to know that.
We have made the necessary applications for clean water, drinking water, and, uh, the lead service line reimbursement, but as Mandy says, the legislature has to appropriate the monies, which we won't know till May or June, but in terms of if our project gets funded, we won't know until October, November, is what they've told us.
The other thing I want to mention is this was part of a bigger project. It also had, um, was the street that went around Heritage Manor. We have taken that out of it. The only reason why we're moving forward with these two blocks is because of the school project that's happening at the same time. And we don't go back and rip up what they've already completed.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Stephanie. Kind of puts a little more stress on that decision. But I, I do agree. I, I, I believe that, um, you know, being cognizant of the school project going on, um, you know, I think it's something that we should be moving forward with. And I think worst case scenario, I, I mean, we enter a project next year, right? Would that be it? If we didn't get any funding, uh, on PFA in October?
Then we, then we have to take what bond.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
I just wanted to be clear on that before you made your decision.
Thank you very much. Okay, more questions?
Jim, on, uh, the bottom of page thirty-one?
Sure.
So you have, uh, engineer's estimate? Is that your estimate?
No, these, oh, oh, no, that was, uh, from S E H, after I had consulted with them a couple times.
Okay, so their estimate is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars less than, um, TNT, um, construction. And so...
Yeah, those are numbers that came through from the feasibility study and their preparation. Once you get down to final plans and specifications, they're putting in numbers based on bids they've already received or last year's bids.
That's what I was wondering, if they were from last year's, is that what they're?
That's where they're putting together these numbers, and that's exactly what I do when I bring numbers to you, too, is I have to go back and look at our recent projects of a similar nature. And, uh, it's kind of fun, actually, if you go through this bid tabulation and look at the different unit prices for different bid items from the different contractors, how much different they are, uh, or lessons that they've learned. I, I find it amusing, uh, it's probably on page, I'm sorry, I'm probably taking more, you, I'm an engineer, so I gotta give you more detail, but, but I find it amusing if you go back. We had Boulder excavation on our Fifth Street South project, the current project, and they bid that at one cent per cubic yard. I think this year, I had, I didn't, don't remember. Uh, no, we don't have, yeah, we do have rock excavation, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars per cubic yard, as opposed to a penny. So, but it, it's even strange looking from contractor to contractor to find out where they put their money or their unit prices to come up with those costs, so.
Jim, does this two-block job have some of those thirty-six lead lines in it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's part of, and right now, we're actively pursuing, I think you got a copy of my second newsletter here a couple weeks ago. And really trying to put the push on the residents to call to get their sewer televised, because at the same time, then we can, for those that we don't already know through the lead service line inventory, uh, our personnel can identify what's coming into the meter as to whether it's no longer unknown, but whether it's copper or non-compliant lead or galvanized pipe, so. That's part of our push.
Were they able to find the multiple water lines that involved the school?
Uh, they've been finding it. I know Larry's been working with them in terms of meters and so forth. Uh, we know where one drain comes out of their swimming pool and, uh, we're rerouting it a little bit, so it gets hooked, make sure it gets hooked into our storm sewer system rather than sanitary sewer system and... So yes, that's, that's an ongoing process because they're still looking and finding, but we've got enough flexibility that
Okay.
we will coordinate with them to make sure it gets properly addressed.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. Thank you, Jim. Second. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Stephanie. Bridgette, good evening.
Need a packet to do this. All right, so, good evening, Mayor and Council. On page thirty-two, we're looking at, uh, Redhead Mountain Bike Park Master Plan Final Version. Uh, if you recall, a version that went to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission was passed through council. That was short on, um, three pieces of information, and, um, that was in the contract with BAR, which included, um, programming, interpretive signage, and then, uh, basically a maintenance structure plan, um, something that can be looked at and considered for future growth of Redhead. Uh, these items were desired for the city, uh, because they can be kind of a, a framework, a blueprint for any, um, department staff moving forward, for the council moving forward. Um, it just gives good ideas, but they are working documents, so they can change and grow and shift as per, um, the city's pleasure. So, this would be the public-facing, uh, master plan document that would be shared, um, on the website and in various other locations. So I'm recommending and, and hoping for council approval of this master plan tonight.
Hey, council, I would look for a motion and support for approval of the Redhead Mountain Bike Park M T V Park Master Plan Final Version. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I don't know why. Jim? All right, so I'm already, Marty points to the right, so. Any further discussion? Besides, it's good to have you back, Jim. See the change in the atmosphere? It's just a global motion. We laugh once in a while now that I'm back.
Yeah.
Are you gonna want to wait, like, a ride?
No.
This change is not going to cost the city any money, right?
There's nothing tied to
Okay.
expenses in it.
Okay.
Yeah. Just ideas for things that could cost money maybe, but it's ideas. It's a working document.
It's good to have ideas.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I just, uh, I just want to say thank you and thank you for putting this all together and making this all happen, and, and also the Redhead Trail Committee and the Parks Committee. There's just, you know, I'm glad this is a working document, because, you know, I have some concerns on page fifty-nine, so I'm glad we can have that working. Change is what we need. So, good job. I'm proud of you.
Yes, thanks for all your hard work. This is excellent for our city, community, area, Iron Range, everything.
Yeah. It's a fun project. It is, Jim.
You can mention a lot of things, but not that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. On page, uh, well, this is just my memo on page sixty-one, um, and what it, they have the added documents in their packet, okay. So, page sixty-two has an update to the Long Year Lake Pump Track build construction. Uh, originally, we had aimed for and desired for it to be built in two thousand twenty-five, and due to grant funding and match requirements, uh, the build would need to be pushed out to two thousand twenty-six, which ultimately is a, is a better, maybe timeframe, because it, it could be incongruently happening when the courts are being done, so it's, you're not getting it piecemealed all, i- i- in different phases. It, it would happen at one time, and, and Long Year Lake Park would look a lot better with those two pieces being completed at once. And so, um, asking for approval to push out the construction date for the pump track to two thousand twenty-six, but we still would be looking at the proposals in this two thousand twenty-five contract that did go out.
All right. Well, it's unfortunate to have to wait, but I think you're right. I mean, all done at one time is, uh, of course, don't have that much of a choice when it comes to budgets. Hey, council, I'll look for a motion and support to approve the, uh, addendum.
Make motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion?
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Is this grant funding like sunset at some point? Or are you...
We, we asked the I triple R specifically if we could push out the construction date to two thousand twenty-six, and they said yes, so we have that approval.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And on page sixty-three, you're looking at a contract for a campground host, uh, with Rich Weedman for the twenty... Uh with Rich Weedman for the twenty twenty-five camping season at Iron Trail Campground. Uh Rich found the posting on social media, so it's nice to know that social media can bring in. Um some interest to uh this position. And Rich has stayed at the campground before, so he's familiar with Iron Trail Campground. He was there a month last summer. He seems like a really good fit. It's him and his wife and he's really excited and willing to take on the software piece. The registration piece, which is what we lacked last year and what made the job a little bit more difficult. So it this is the right fit for Campground Host and there is no exchange of um. Of salary or wages for this. It's in lieu of uh Rich and his wife camping there.
Hey, council, I'll look for a motion and support to approve uh Rich Weedman as a campground host.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion?
One thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um so does this eliminate the uh for like our department has carrying a cell phone twenty-four seven then? A weekend and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Bridgette, um uh line item one. It was two different dates, September fifteenth, but then it's also October thirty-first, so what?
Yeah.
How long will he be there?
It's.
Do you know?
May through October.
Okay.
Yes.
So what is this? Why, what's this September twenty-fifteenth?
I need to look at it here if it got put in there wrong.
It's on bullet point one.
Hold on. I shut my packet. Hold on one second. Alright, so. Let's see, May first, twenty twenty-five to September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, so not October, September fifteen. Those are the dates that he's contracted to be the host. And then the third. It's redundant is what that is.
So why is it say October thirty-first then?
Yeah, correct.
Water.
Yeah, the this is a typo. Um it is September fifteenth, so if we could make the. That update.
Just a clarification of what the season is.
Which one is his contract?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
Yeah, he can't stay longer than that. But I suppose, yeah, October thirty-first is what. Yeah.
After September fifteenth.
Then Larry's on the hook.
Yeah, so this new employee is.
Okay, future, future.
Pretty sure Larry wanted it for a year.
Alright, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is uh when I read in the packet, this is the first time I ever heard of a campground host. What does one do?
Yeah, so campground hosts, they're set up and expected to be there on typically weekends. Um and then evenings. So we have a campground coordinator this year. Um which has historically been a seasonal employee who would work like an eight to four. They have the phone, they have the iPad to take reservations. At four P M on weeknights, they leave that behind. The campground host comes in and takes it so that they can respond to any customer service calls. And then they're just present with their name on a big sign and their phone number. So that if somebody comes in and has questions about where to park or the that type of thing, they can respond to that. The campground host too will fill the toiletries in the bathroom on the weekends, stuff that need if there's an emergency cleanup. Taking care of that kind of thing.
So then we'll be installing Larry's phone number into that phone?
Yeah, but the it there's they know Larry's calling Rich this week to talk to him if if he's approved.
Pretty popular thing. Usually they're the first ones to reach him when you pull in that uh something that's not totally established.
Yeah.
Keep the noise down.
And then they'll manage the reservations on evenings and.
Evenings and weekends. That's it, that's it. That's the exchange. Which is typical at campgrounds, like State Park Campgrounds, they have that too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Thank you, Bridgette.
You rock, Bridgette. We're gonna miss you.
Katie, good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um so I'm excited to announce that we have a tentative contract. Um with Keta Creative and Lena and Company, starting on page sixty-six of your packet. Um so just looking for council approval approval this evening to authorize the execution of the contract. And for Keta and Lena to design, produce, and install a mural located um in the green space between City Hall and the library.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good work.
We're excited about it.
Hey, council, I'll look for a motion and support.
Sure.
Big motion? Thank you, Jim. Support? Thank you, Jim. Further discussion?
I just have questions.
Yeah.
Is there a picture of the art that they're going to do?
Um we, yeah, we don't.
I don't wanna approve something if I don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, once we have like finalized our piece, we'll bring that back to council for approval before it gets mounted on the wall. So right now we do have like a just a concept sketch. And then um after the contract is signed and approved, we'll be meeting with the um artist. To talk about community feedback through the survey that we had in the community engagement session. And um start to make some changes and revisions and we'll kind of work through that process as it goes and then we'll bring it back to council for final approval. Yeah, you're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, and then on page seventy-one of your packet, we have a letter of support. Um I received some exciting news that the Hibbing Historical Society has initiated a project. Um in collaboration with the Minnesota Historical Society to digitalize local newspapers. And they've been kind enough to include Chisholm's newspaper in the project. Um so as most of you know, we currently have the Chisholm papers housed in the basement of the library dating back to nineteen fifteen. Um and digitizing digitizing them has been a really just a long-term goal and we faced a lot of challenges along the way of making this happen. And we're finally at a place where we have some support from our neighbors in Hibbing. And also the resources are in place at the Minnesota Historical Society to make it happen. So with the success of this project, um our local newspapers will be digitally held in a database. That will be housed and maintained by the Minnesota Hist- Minnesota Historical Society. And then the database will be free and accessible to anybody in the world. Um the newspapers will be searchable by date, keyword, location. So you can just go in there, type in a name, and all the articles of that person will show up. Um it's truly just will be a game changer for local research and beyond the convenience. It's just a crucial step in preserving our local history. Uh so the next steps of the project will be to secure some additional funding. Um the cost is a dollar a page. And so far, there's been seven thousand five hundred dollars of donations, which equals seven thousand five hundred dollars pages of our local papers digitalized. Uh so later on in the agenda, um under Mayor Lance, there is a small financial request to support the project for your consideration. The current um donators that we have include the um fifteen hundred from just community members. Then we have a thousand dollars from Security State Bank and then the Hibbing Community Foundation has made a five thousand dollar donation. Um what else? Other than that, just a huge thank you to Erica um over at the Hibbing Historical Society for um initiating the project and being the leader on it. And just looking for permission um to forward her the letter of support for help with future requests on the project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is great.
It's huge, yeah.
Is that you're gonna get a welcome? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, April.
Super excited for this to happen.
Yeah. It's big.
Is there support?
I'll second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, great, thank you.
Guaranteed Vita would be so.
Right? Yeah, she would be. Um lastly, um a letter of support to the United Way of Northeastern Minnesota. This request for the letter came in two days ago in the hopes to make a deadline for a grant application. And so the staff at United Way just wanted me to extend a thank you for the last minute add to the agenda. Um the letter is in support of the United Way to operate um Dolly Parton's Imagination Library in our region. Um the program provides free age-appropriate books to children and they're mailed directly to their home during those crucial developmental years. Um there's been a lot of success with the program and I know it's a resource that a lot of people in our community utilize. So with that, just looking for approval to send a letter of support to United Way to assist them in funding requests.
Hey, council, I'll look for that motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening. Um the first item I have on the agenda is resolution number zero three two five dash three four. This is to authorize the city of Chisholm to facilitate applications with the Minnesota D N R. We have had a similar resolution that has expired, so this one um would go for five years till twenty thirty. And it helps with the A T V Trails Grant Name Program, so we facilitate that through the city with our club member tracks.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'll look for a motion and support for resolution number zero three two five dash three four.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Um this is great. Good job with that. Um do we have a ten percent match from the A T V club?
The ten percent isn't reimbursed. The club eats the ten percent. They pay ninety percent of the actual cost, so there's no cost to the city.
So the club pays ninety percent of it?
They get ninety percent of the sum.
Yeah, you have to explain this to me a little bit. That's okay, I'm sorry.
No. No, we all know.
Appreciate it.
If you have questions, so do others. So um the grant uh maintenance grant program through the Grant uh A T V. Minnesota D N R A T V program is that the club does work on the trail and they get reimbursed from the work. And um the club gets reimbursed ninety percent of the actual cost. So the club, that's how the club makes money to put money back into the trails. So there's the ten percent is just eaten by the club. And there's no cost to the city at all. Yeah, the city's just a pass-through of the financial, they're like a financial. They call it something. Fiscal agent, thank you. Fiscal agent, so yeah, there's no cost to the city and um. And uh you know, so if the if the uh for easy number, if the um A T V club paid a contractor to put on ten loads of gravel on the trail, they get paid for nine. And then we just, you know, we have other fundraising things that we do to gain uh to raise money and stuff for that ten percent, so. Yeah. It's a good program. It works for us. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Larry. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excuse me, thank you. Motion carries.
Next item I have on the agenda with the resignation um of our Parks, Trails, and Rec Director, we have an updated job description. There is some changes to this job description, just I wanted to encompass all of the aspects of it. Um and that is in red, the changes that are on here, so I'm looking for approval of this job description.
Hey, council? Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a discussion.
Okay.
Seeing that about half of the salary and benefits for this position come out of the Redhead account in the city's budget. Um. Redhead and mountain bike trails aren't mentioned at all in this. And under preferred skills and abilities, I would prefer us to have some, at least one bullet point of. Some knowledge of mountain bike trails or experience with mountain bike trails. And also a bullet point to project manager because we're in the middle of millions of dollars of projects out there. And um. And that world is very different than a lot of this other stuff, so it's gonna be hard to find somebody. I mean, I think we'd put in here, but I think we have a harder time finding someone with that skill sets. Because the world of construction is very different than, you know, hiring rank attendants and trying to register youth soccer and things like that. Those are all important, but they're kind of kind of different worlds. But if we don't put it in here. I mean, I think we can't discount important, somebody has good project skills, because they could probably handle it. But it's harder to go the other way. Somebody that's great with children's programming. They just have a harder time moving into the construction part, so the Longyear Lake Park and Redhead and Trail, I have some other upcoming. So I would like, I would prefer to see that added as preferred skills. Doesn't have to be for all criteria, of course, but it's something that's a value. And a big part of the position, especially since we're twenty, fifty percent of the salary. And and the city's account for this position under Redhead.
Okay. Uh thank you.
Um I don't, I don't disagree with Counsel Halverson, but uh. They should be mentioned in it, but is that going to cause us to? To say they, not that anybody has an experience with our kind of bike trail. It doesn't exist anywhere else but here. So we should rehire Bridgette for more money. Because she's dealt with it for. So.
If her salary was higher, maybe she'll come back.
That's, you know, that's a, I literally, she's the only one that's ever dealt with this. So I don't know anybody else that has a tachy made trail. And that's where I would disagree with putting something in there because you're gonna limit a lot of your staff. You're gonna eliminate everybody else.
I'm just saying mountain bike trails in general.
Yeah. So. Want to tell Superior, forget it?
They're all over the country.
Mountain bikes are, but not tachy made, or mo- mountain bike trails are, but not tachy made mountain bike trails.
It's it's a very unique skill set. You know, I I I think whoever has that skill set will definitely stand out during the hiring process. Uh on the page seventy-five, it does mention the Redhead Mountain Bike Park. Um yeah, I think in the emails go back forth into Redhead, it's kind of like a twenty percent uh, you know, take of your time and salary.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent of salary?
Fifty percent. I looked it up.
Twenty-three of us, and I think we have twenty-four. I have a percentage of my salary in there, too.
I I know I I lean on uh our city administrator a lot, especially when it comes to the one that's, you know, qualified in these where I get opinionated. Um so I I think we should leave it where it is.
I would say that if. Depending on the candidates and how they come in, I guess we'll see what happens. I thought one consideration and splitting it into two jobs. Possibly.
Right, for the future ahead. I'm gonna slow down right now just because uh with six hundred and twenty people being laid off around us. With no idea what might be happening with our communities before I think about expanding our staff a little anymore, you know, I think it's gonna be. But you know, you're you're not wrong. I mean, there are different aspects and things that can happen, but Redhead could be gone in two days, you know, with the mindset of all, I guess that's where we're.
Amazing this job technically too much for one person? I mean, I know she's very super busy.
Well, we do have a trail builder and we do rely on our consultants and, you know, other forms, but.
Is is our engineer involved with the Redhead at all? Jim, are you involved with that at all?
Minimal. Usually all the questions are all the people.
Okay.
All those in favor of leaving where it is?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. You're a local, you're a local.
Congressman Halliburton?
Aye.
Congressman Foston?
Aye.
Congressman Varda?
Aye.
Congressman Hovison?
Nay.
Near Lake?
Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, moving on.
Next item I have on the agenda is the job posting for the city of Chisholm Parks, Trails, and Rec Director. This position will be uh posted for thirty days in all of our normal avenues of posting. I can rattle some off if you're interested in those.
Yeah.
So these positions, we post the League of Minnesota Cities, we post on Indeed. We post with um some of the director positions, we'll post the uh newspapers, which also includes the virtual piece of it. So the Masawi always gets posted. Then we'll go out to Duluth and Star Tribune. Um depending on, we always get cost from them and post through those also. Our own social media, this one would be posted on, there's numerous social media avenues for those, for these types of positions. Those are, those are typical. If anybody has any recommendation for something different. Those are, those are typical, if anybody has any recommendation for something different, um, we can do that also.
I think we usually get a pretty wide reach and our first ambulance director came from Colorado, Arizona.
Colorado, Colorado.
Yeah. No, Bridget came up north, so. I look for a motion to, uh, post for the Parks Trails and Recreation, Recreation Director.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.
The next item I have is to appoint a hiring committee for the position of Park Trails and Rec Director. Uh, director positions, we do a council that is on those committees. I would also recommend, um, from the staff level, Larry and Devin, because they work closely with this position. And then, as we usually say, anybody from the outside, that would make sense if we wanted to bring somebody in. I haven't determined that yet. Potential, yeah, he would be one that could potentially be one who would come in.
Right, I believe the department heads come typically with two council members.
Yeah, Travis didn't have interest.
What?
Uh, Travis did have interest for being on the Park's.
Yeah, I had him written down, he was. So you're not here, no, and plus being on the Park Board. Um, you know, whoever does, uh, wanna be on this board, I, I think, uh, hiring committee should have the time availability or be able to make that. Um, sometimes that's just how she rolls when it comes to the interview process.
I couldn't, sure.
Would you like to be on it?
Sure.
Okay, counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve Steph, Devin, Larry, Travis and Jeb to the, uh, hiring committee. And if anyone else has needed.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. First thing, uh, Martin Motors requests for citywide car show, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. At, uh, East Central Avenue in front of their shop, using the empty lots in Tuana's Park and across from their business. So with the owner's permission. Entry fee would be a food donation, cash donation to Chisholm Food Shelf and the Precious Paws, this is ten A M. to six, five, six P M. Vendors High on the Hog Barbecue, maybe some ice cream, arts crafts, possible candy and drink cart. So we'd be looking to make, uh, approve this request with a citywide festival.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? Any input? Any questions?
The name looks the same as last year, kind of lost off. Um, if it's rain, though, we make it smaller, like last year was horrible. Yeah, oh, we need jobs, we talked to Larry, so.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next donation request from the Hibbing Historical Society. So, they're requesting, uh, a thousand dollars to City of Chisholm towards this project, anticipating sixty thousand in funding through other sources. How many pages do we have? Any idea?
So the whole project total, we're, we're looking at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, very expensive. And I believe we still have plenty left in our, um. Our, this can come, can this come out of our, um. Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. I think that's a very good investment.
How much do they want us to give?
Thousand bucks?
Thousand?
You could ask us for a hundred thousand.
Doesn't stop us.
I'm not against.
I would like to, um, I think staying at a thousand and then watching where you have, you know, what happens, they can always come back and ask for more. Set precedent and all of a sudden, everybody's asking for.
A hundred thousand?
Yeah. So, uh, counsel, look for a motion of support to approve the, uh, donation request of a thousand dollars to the Hibbing Historical Society Museum.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Alright, schedule a working session for. The sister city, um, request from the Slovenian National Home. So I'd be, uh, I would like them to come and have a little more conversation with us. Um, liquidated damages on Fifth Street, Southwest Fitness Center, membership policy. Additions ago, campground and Redhead. Oh, we always need Brian there. We can try, if he's not there, we can at least send him on any type of inquiry. So which, uh. What's the urgency on the, um, number two on here, Stephanie or Jim? In the campground?
No, there's no urgency on those other two.
Do we wanna try to do after our council meeting on the ninth?
I'm opposed to that.
No, okay. Any other days, jump out at anybody?
It's the second council meeting next month.
About Tuesday night.
I know Brian has other meetings on Tuesday, but Monday's only occasions, so I'm thinking of him.
Who's the fourteenth for April?
I am on the fourteenth.
Or Wednesday, the sixteenth.
We do need gentlemen to meet in, okay, so Tuesday or Wednesday, Wednesday will be the sixteenth.
I'm on the sixteenth. Typically fill my schedule on days that aren't the second, fourth Wednesdays.
How about the twenty-third then, the second, the week, we could second.
That works for me.
Works for me, doesn't work for Marty.
I have the thirtieth.
I'm not here for you from the conference.
Steph's coming to the conference. Eight Easter Sundays free. That's there, I'll be in town. Actually, I won't be, I do have training, never mind. Um, what about the twenty-ninth? It's Tuesday.
I'm good with that.
All right, first three.
Twenty-nine works for you?
Oh, yeah.
April?
Yep.
Yeah. Five thirty?
Five thirty?
Five thirty? Alright, I'll look for a motion to, uh, schedule that working session for April twenty-ninth, five thirty P M. in the council chambers.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. Just give it one second, let me put that in the calendar here.
Mr. Mayor, I have not, I'm gonna be honest, I haven't reached out, uh, to Brian yet on that, uh. The Fitness Center membership policy.
I kinda figured that, that's why I was hoping to do that, a working session.
Let you know.
No, that's why I mentioned to Steph and that's what didn't, you know, I figured it'd be, it was unfair to put that on us on you and Marty, I think. So that's why I wanted to put it on a working session and we can all just hash it out and knock it out one night. Okay, moving on, last thing on the agenda is a. Cigarette and Tobacco Products License Application. Did I skip something? That's number, is that five? Oh, geez, okay. You are right. Thank you, Jim. Okay, it's number four, I wrote them down on here. Four would be, uh, resolution zero four two five dash three five, proclamation recognizing April twenty twenty-five as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Three twenty-five. And a correction on the top of the, uh, resolution. You're fine. May counsel, I would look for that motion and support.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think you're right, it's zero four twenty-five dash thirty, right?
It is, we gotta make a correction.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Alright, last but not least is the, uh, twenty twenty-five cigarette and tobacco products license application. Uh, new business took over on, uh, corner of Lake and First, so I'd look for a motion to approve that license.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jeb.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. May counsel, uh, anything under miscellaneous? Now, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Jeb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.